April 23rd, special study meeting of the Toronto Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes Planning Commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carla Ward and Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized to provide your name and address on the assignment sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, Blackberry's, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. And for items that are not a public hearing, I will open or provide an opportunity for public comment. Who's going to do the roll call tonight? Kathy, please.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Campton?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shafkey?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle? Here. All right, item number two, approval of the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion, Mr. Schultz?
Anybody as prepared?
Second, Mr. Campton?
Mr. Campton?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shafkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Okay, item number three are the minutes from our April 9th meeting. Any comments or amendments to the meeting? I would like to make a suggestion. In the resolution, there were two conditions that the Planning Commission put on, the project at Crooks and Big Beaver. They use the word stairwells, and we talked about the open stairs between the side. I'd like to change stairwells to stairways because it's not really an enclosed structure. That's all right with everyone?
Yes.
Sure. All right, Mr. Sanzika?
I'll second.
Mr. Krent?
Do you move an approval?
Yeah.
Mr. Campton?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shafkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. All right, item number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. No one stepping forward, we'll move to item number five. Mr. Savinat, is that you or who's giving his only?
I believe that's Mr. Krent.
Mr. Krent?
I'm the new guy.
Would you give us your report then?
Yes. There was one item before the zoning board of appeals. It was for a commercial property or industrial property at 1861 Birchwood. It's for United Ventures II LLC. Basically, they wanted to provide a parking lot for their employees' equipment and storage bins for landscaping materials. This lot was used for 30 years as a parking lot. It's surrounded on all sides by industrial, zoned industrial. And the zoning board looked at it. Because of the narrowness of the lot, they decided that adding the required structure and other items, the driveway, probably a pedestrian walkway, maybe bike racks, all the other requirements for that zoning, including probably trees in the parking area, that maybe one-third or more of that property be used up with all those things that they never used. So, since it was a parking lot for 30 years, they're going to improve it by constructing a fence all around it. They indicated eight foot high. The zoning board approved the variance to allow that facility to function without a building on the property.
Okay.
Just to add to that, we discussed that informally, a previous Planning Commission meeting, informational purposes only, and they'll be back before Planning Commission, May 14th.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Krent? All right, moving on. Item number six, Downtown Development Authority.
There was a meeting, Downtown Development Authority meeting, on the 17th of April. The biggest thing on the agenda, and I don't want to open up a can of worms because I'm not an attorney or an accountant, but fulfilling the bond obligations of Downtown Development Authority.
They recognize that it's an issue.
They didn't come up with any solutions, but they're going to focus the reference on coming up with a fix so that they can address the bond obligations of Downtown Development Authority and move forward. So those that want to kind of follow this, there'll be upcoming DDA meetings where I'll have more information. It was just kind of spoken to, spoken of in general terms. I don't have any figures on the top of my head or anything, but I can certainly keep, I can provide links to minutes, and as we kind of ratchet up the information, I can keep the Planning Commission updated on what the status is of this issue.
Questions, Mr. Savinat? All right. You're on again, Planning.
Planning and zoning report, yeah, we sobered living facilities. Went before city council on the 15th of April, and it was postponed. Some of the council members wanted more information. I don't know, they're postponed until May 13th, council meeting. I've got letters written, questions from two council members. I have not responded to them yet, I'm kind of waiting to see if I can, I want to respond to them once rather than kind of piecemeal. I will respond to those questions, and when it's back before city council again, they'll determine how they're going to act. They're basically, they have five options. They can approve it as written, they can approve it with changes, they can deny it, they can postpone it again, or they can send it back to Planning Commission for further work. We'll know on the 13th of May what they're going to do with it.
Okay, questions?
Just a general, just a general comment. I mentioned, I made it before the camera was on, I just kind of said something a little bit under my breath. All the easy sites are developed. Just a general observation. Everything that's come before us now, if it's a vacant site, it's vacant for a reason. It's vacant because there were challenges in the past that made it cost prohibitive or whatever, there was reasons why it wasn't. And if it's a vacant site that's coming for us, there's challenges. I'm just venting a little bit, that's all.
We'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, item number eight is a postponed item. It's a public hearing. It's a special use and preliminary site plan review file number SU 403. It's the proposed Fifth Third Bank ATM on the northeast corner of John R. and 14 Mile in Oakland Plaza, section 36, currently zoned, Community Business CB. And Mr. Carla?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Glad you could join us today.
Yeah, sorry, I was off and on. Thank you. The item before us tonight is a Fifth Third ATM located in the Oakland Plaza. As the chairman alluded to, this has continued to this date because we have asked for additional information from the applicant. The applicant has done a very nice job of addressing our concerns and has met, has resubmitted a plan that has addressed most of our issues. There were, in the previous report, there are eight outstanding items, and I'll just quickly go through them and address how the applicant has addressed those concerns. The first item was, we asked for a recent of the site plan to confirm property lines and setbacks. The applicant has submitted that in a standard format, which does allow us to confirm that the proposed ATM structure does meet all setback requirements. The applicant has confirmed that the mature landscaping along 14 Mile will not be disturbed or harmed as a result of construction. The applicant, as requested, has added curbing adjacent to the drive aisle to separate internal circulation within the parking lot as well as from circulation for the ATM use. The applicant has amended their site plan to provide the necessary stacking length as well as number of spaces. They were deficient in number of spaces as well as length of spaces, so the site stackings now conforms to ordinance requirements. The applicant has striped the necessary parking on the ends as requested. The only thing we asked to, as part of the final site plan, is to submit, just indicate where they're going to put no parking signs, those two locations, just put that on the actual site plan itself. The issue, the last issue outstanding is lighting. Ordinance allows a 20-foot maximum, however, it has to be reduced to 10-foot between the hours of 11:00 in the evening until the morning. The applicant has requested relief from that in order to provide 20-foot candle readings during 24-hour periods. The applicant did provide me with the lighting guidelines from Fifth Third. It did note that 10-foot candles was a minimum required. It didn't note the 20-foot candle requirement. However, I'm speaking with the applicant, and he can address these issues, he did note that Fifth Third does request and/or desire a minimum of two-foot candle readings at a distance of 50 feet circumference from the, I'm sorry, radii from the ATM location. One of the issues that comes up into concerns about this two-foot requirement is that the existing property line is only 29 feet from the ATM, so even if they were to do two-foot candles at 50 feet, it exceeds into the property line, which again is over the ordinance requirement. So based on all these facts, as well as the nighttime, as well as the location, we are recommending that they do maintain the 10-foot candle readings after hours. And our feeling is if they are able to maintain those 10 after hours, they do meet the foot candle readings at the property line, and so they're complying with ordinance requirements. Again, the applicant is here to address any of those lighting concerns and answer any questions from the commission, but our last, in a summary, we do recommend approval, provided that the lighting be reduced to 10 after hours, as well as no parking signs are shown on the final site plan. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Carla? I have one. Brent, could you go back to that slide? I thought I saw a note that said no parking signs, that note number six that I missed?
I think I did too.
Site plan? Yes. Site, or, so they've got them up there, number six.
One right here.
Yep.
Should be one right here.
Yep.
That should work. I want to confirm with, I just want to confirm with the engineering that they'd have them in those locations, rather have them closer to the curb farther down. So I'll work with, I'll work with the engineering as well as the applicant, just to confirm. I apologize for missing that.
Wherever you want to put them, we put them out in front so nobody even can pull in there.
Okay, well, I will, I'll check with the engineer, and I apologize for not catching that.
Yeah, it's fine.
And so he meets that requirement.
Mr. Schultz?
And minor, very minor. Under the 52-foot, 8-inch dimension, running horizontally, there's a note for number 10, but your notes only go up to number nine.
I agree. No, but you're. I admit that.
I just want to prove I read the drawings, okay?
I was testing you.
I found it.
Any other questions for Mr. Carla? All right, would the applicant like to step forward, introduce yourself, and share with us whatever you'd like to share?
Hi, I'm Jerry Weber, Weber Architecture out of Lakewood, Ohio. I represent Fifth Third Bank on this project, and I guess we've covered everything except for the lighting up until this point. And the bank is basing their lighting levels on a national requirement that has been adopted by 10 or 11 states. Ohio hasn't, I don't believe Michigan has, but Florida, Colorado, California have adopted that. And the national requirement is a minimum of 10, a minimum of 10-foot candles within five feet of an ATM or a night deposit, and then a minimum of two-foot candles for a 50-foot radius from an ATM or a night drop. So in order to achieve the 10-foot candles, that's pretty easy, you put a couple of very powerful lights right above the ATM, and that works pretty well, although a lot of your lighting will increase the amount. I did a photometric as-built survey last night, and right underneath the ATM, I was hitting well over 20, 25, 28, sometimes 30. But that's because you're right under the light, it's hot, and that's the most important area to have it well lit. To achieve the two-foot candles, what would require us, could you go to the photometric plan up there, probably easier? This outside thing here, this outside loop, I think is like a quarter-foot candle. I know that this third one in is one-foot candle, and that's just from four recessed lights underneath the canopy, that's about 10 feet, 10 and a half feet above the grade. As it is, we don't come close to achieving the two-foot candles. With the ATMs, we depend on ambient lighting in the area for lighting that two-foot candles out beyond the extent of the lighting for the canopy on this particular installation. When we go out, we could go out and test it, and we probably have maybe a foot candle already in this whole area based on the existing parking lot lighting, and picking up any lighting that happens to spill over from the street lighting. In order to bring this up, if there was no other lighting in the area, in order to bring this up to the two-foot candles minimum, which would be out to about this area, we would have to start adding other pole lights in the island, or here, over here, and then start lighting these areas up with pole lights. As it is with the ATM, remote ATMs, this is all the bank usually puts in for the lighting, but they do want to have a sufficient amount of lighting around the ATM. If we were to reduce this lighting around the ATM to 10-foot candles, then we would only have one foot candle maybe out here, and then zero out along the outside edges. So it kind of reduces, it's a cash 22. If we want to have the 10 around the ATM, we were going to give up the lighting that surrounds the area. One of the things that customers are afraid of is that if it's light right at the ATM but it's dark around it, then they're hesitant to go up and use the ATM. Between the hours of 11:00 and daylight is very critical because that's usually when there're not a lot of people around. The stores are closed, you know, 2:00 the bar's closed, so 3:00 people are pretty much gone and at home. So that's even more important, since there's not a lot of people around, to have sufficient lighting for the customers using the ATM. The ATM is not manned if it's not monitored, like you get at a convenience store parking lot, or a gas station parking lot, or gas station area where they fill the tanks, there's usually somebody inside that's kind of observing and being there. If something was to happen out by the gas pump, there's somebody inside that could call the police. In this type of a location and the situation, it's the customer and whoever's harassing them or going to rob them or whatever. So that's why we'd like to keep the lighting at the levels that we normally have. You're looking basically, this is your 10-foot candle area, it's about a 20-foot by 20-foot area approximately, this area here, and outside of this, it goes down drastically down to a quarter-foot candle. So you're only having the bright light for a very, very small area on a very, very large parking lot. So I hope I've explained it, and I request that you grant a, you know, an exception to the requirements of the code for the reducing the lighting from down to 10-foot candles or less. Any questions?
Any questions for the decision?
Clarifications?
Mr. Krent?
Just one. You know, I was out at the site today, but I neglected to see the parking lot lighting. Is there other parking lot lighting besides what you're going to be providing in there?
Yes, there are other parking lot lightings, I haven't measured them. Off the top of my head, I don't know how close they are actually to our site. We are on the outskirts of the site, and I think most of the, most of the lighting is further inboard, and they're usually 30 or 40-foot poles, and that usually gives about an ambient lighting of around maybe one-foot candle, except when you're right underneath them.
How about from 14 Mile, that night, did you take any light readings around?
I didn't take any light readings.
Did you see shadows? Mr. Shafkey, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I wasn't really sure when you said not monitor, that means there's no cameras or anything on the ATM, is it?
Yeah, well, there are cameras on the ATM.
Okay.
Okay, that monitors it, but the thing is, is that if something's happening, it's going to happen now, and the cameras are, you know, they don't really, they're not watching all the cameras all over. All it does is record. It's like in a bank.
Right.
When someone comes in, then they go back and they get in their tapes, and then they go back and look at the tapes. They don't have somebody watching the tapes.
I see, I see.
Okay.
I just want to get clear, I want to have a clear understanding.
Yeah, I mean, they do have alarms on the ATMs. If you came up with a forklift and tried to lift the thing off and drag it down the street, there are alarms that would go off, and then whoever made, like this one, might be a D-bol machine, a D-bol handles the security, they would call the police and tell them. But if somebody comes up behind me when I'm at the ATM, you know, you're doing this on the ATM, and somebody could come up behind you. So we try and get pretty bright around there.
Mr. Schultz, you had a question?
Well, I kept hearing 10-foot candles, 10-foot candles, 10-foot candles, and we're asking for 10-foot candles, so I'm confused. What?
Well, the requirement is 10, you know, a minimum of 10, but it's a nature of, let's say this room needed a minimum of.
The requirement is a maximum of 10.
Your requirement is a maximum of 10, the bank's requirement is a minimum of 10.
So where's the disconnect? If you take it to 10, you meet our requirement of not more than 10, and everybody's happy.
Right, but again, if I meet, if I meet the 10 around the ATM, then I'm not meeting any light further out from the.
It's in a totally lit parking lot adjacent to a lit street, adjacent to a 24-hour-a-day business as your nearest neighbor. Brent, do we even have the authority to vary this, or does it have to go to BZA?
You have the authority to vary it based on a proven safety requirement, a safety need.
Mr. Stratt?
What if you were to put a couple of uplights where the trees are?
That would light the trees.
Oh, you're going to get some reflection down.
It'd spill over.
You get spill.
Not much.
Depends on the time of year.
Yeah.
But that certainly would help the situation, I guess, that we're trying to do, but what, I guess my question to Ben would be, or to Brent, what's the purpose of that?
Of?
Of the ordinance, what is the intent?
The intent is just to reduce the amount of lighting in the community.
Reduce or increase?
Reduce. At night. I think the purpose is 10-foot candles at night is much less, or much greater than 10-foot candles in the day, and so the effect of 10-foot candles should be sufficient to light this structure.
But he's, am I misunderstanding? I thought you said that you are a 10, but you're not a 2 around the perimeter?
Correct.
Your objective and goal is to maintain the 10?
A minimum of 10.
Minimum of 10.
Correct.
But you're not meeting the 2?
Right, that's correct.
And what is the intent of the 2, I guess?
That's very.
That's the bank's requirement. That has nothing to do with the city's ordinance or anything. That's the minimum for the requirement for the bank.
And how are you accomplishing that?
We're not on this particular location.
So what is the problem as it relates to us here?
Well, the bank would like to have a minimum of 10 around the ATM, and in order to get a minimum of 10, a certain radius around, it's, you see that circle around the ATM, but the farther, the closer you get into the light fixture, the more intense the light will be in order to maintain the 10 at a certain distance from the ATM.
So what's your problem?
Well, they're telling me I have to reduce that lighting to 10 directly underneath the ATM, or underneath the light fixture. So that would, so that would reduce it to, you know, you get 10 feet away, that would reduce it down to five-foot.
So why are we doing that?
It's an ordinance requirement.
Why, what was the intent of the ordinance requirement, I guess?
It was to not overlight sites at night, to make them beacons in such a strong single premise.
Was it really addressing this condition here?
It was addressing similar conditions, yes.
It was, that was the intent?
My understanding it was, yes.
That's what I'm trying to find out. What is the intent?
Well, the intent was 20-foot candles in the day is much less effect than 20-foot candles at night.
They may not need it during the day. Well, I mean, they don't need it during the day. They need the light at night, right?
The question, I guess the question for the Planning Commission to answer is, do they need 20-foot candles at night, or is 10, as the ordinance states, is that sufficient?
Is it appropriate to have at the same 2:00 in the morning, when it's not very busy, as it is at 9:00 at night, or 7:00 at night during winter months? Is it appropriate?
Before we answer that question, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. First of you guys, the 10, or the foot candles, is it measured where? At what height? Is it measured at the ground?
It's stayed right here, I mean, by the way.
And the same question to you, the requirements that the bank is looking to achieve, is it measured at the ground? Is it measured two feet up above the ground?
36 inches above the ground.
Our ordinance requires five feet above grade level.
Okay, at the.
Light level she measured on the horizontal plane at grade level within, or at vertical plane of property, at a height of five feet above grade level.
Are those measurements, how did you get these measurements?
Those are from a photometric plan that was supplied by the canopy management.
Taken at 36 inches above the, above whatever the. Now, the thing that I don't know, did they take into consideration those trees?
No, they're not taken into consideration.
See, because I think the problem is, even if we pump that up to 20-foot candles, you're not going to get what you need at the property line.
No.
So the suggestion of maybe supplementing some lights along the periphery there may achieve what you want and still achieve what we want.
Well, it'll achieve some of what we want, I would think, but what about, what about the back end of the, where we can't put any lighting?
Well, again, I would, I would like to see some foot candle levels at those parking, that is an open parking lot. There is a business 24 hours, 24-hour business in the area, so it's not like it's in a desolate area. So I'm not so sure that you wouldn't get pretty close. I mean, quite honestly, I'd be more concerned with someone hiding from the trees than I would walking across the parking lot. So if you can light that edge a little bit better, and again, I think we have to also take consideration, those trees are going to help the spillage going on the 14 Mile to some degree too, so it's not like there's nothing there, you know, with that. Do we know how big those trees are, how mature they are right now?
They're pretty mature.
They're pretty mature.
Yeah, the foliage doesn't begin until.
20 feet maybe on.
No, they are. That's why I recommended that possibly going with uplight. But I totally agree with what you're saying, because there aren't going to be any cars through your own comment. There's not going to be any cars in the parking lot, but where you have to worry about is behind the trees, or the 24 hour just to the west, your operation there, but I just wanted to know exactly why we had that in there. What was the intent? And you're saying it's to reduce the amount of light level during the evening hours.
Late evening hours.
Late evening hours. Yeah.
Mr. Schultz?
Uh, looking at the plan, the trees are ten to fourteen-inch caliper is the way they're described on the, on the side street. They're good-sized trees.
Yeah, a question on the, the lighting itself. It's all gonna be under that little canopy?
Yes.
How many light?
There are four light fixtures.
So there's four light fixtures under that real tiny area right above the ATM machine. Are there any options where you would light more of the periphery that would balance that light level out so that you wouldn't exceed the ten, but could, but would still meet your requirements? Cause it seems, it seems like you have all of your light sources all centered right there. You're creating a hotspot right on that ATM machine.
We, 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 we have an urban site down in northern Kentucky that's right against the building and so we, we eliminated two of the light fixtures because the building was there. Why would you do that? And since our lighting went down, we did add another two light poles to bring the lighting up. It was a park, you know, it was, it's enclosed on three sides by either a parking lot or buildings and stuff like that. It's in downtown, urban, old neighborhood. So in order to, if we were to, to reduce the light levels under the canopy, we would want to add maybe a pole or two to bring the lighting up a little bit along the tree line. And they would be, you know, fifteen, twenty-foot poles, something like that.
You think they need to be that high?
I, I mean, that's a tall light.
It, it is a tall light, but in my experience, the, the, the lower the light fixture, the more fixtures you need.
I know, but we're not talking about lighting a big area here.
No, you're not.
You know, again, I guess personally, I think, you know, this could be worked out with the engineering, but I would love to see something, or I think they should see something with some more accuracy as far as we have trees there. What do you really need? You know, what, what wattage of lamps are you using? What types of lamps are you using?
Yeah, there, I think there are a hundred watt underneath there. Hundred watt metal halide. And they're, and they're special to throw light out, but it does get hot underneath the light fixture. I mean, right here, it's hot underneath the fluorescent, but you move over here, right, now there's much light.
Just two questions. How long has our ordinance been like this?
Two years.
And I guess the other question is have we had similar problems? I, you know, there are ATMs everywhere across Troy. Have we had that same problem?
I, I can only remember one time since I've been reviewing for the last year plus, one time that the planning commission had, was asked to consider relief and I don't, I do not believe it was granted, but I, I don't know that for sure. Everybody else has come into compliance with the ten-foot reduction.
Well, I, I don't personally feel that I tend to agree with some of the other comments around the table that it could probably be resolved by putting another, another pole to the west and another one to the ad, the east there to accomplish the, the situation. I, I'm not a lighting engineer, but I.
That's, that's not gonna accomplish the perimeter of the entire area. It's only gonna accomplish, again.
Just to answer that, I think we're more concerned about around the ATM than we are the perimeter, just because of how we normally do the remote ATMs. We don't normally put in peripheral lighting. So if we were to, if we were to reduce the lighting underneath the canopy to a maximum of ten-foot candles, we would probably add another light or two to bring the lighting level up to foot, ten-foot candles around that area or a, a maximum of ten-foot.
The ATM that I go to, it, at night, it's dimmed. When you drive up there, when you get to the place where you're gonna put your card in, the lights come up. I don't know why you can't do something like that.
That's, but still, if, if you came up at two in the morning and the lights came up, then we're not according to the code. So what I would rather do, rather than have something mechanical or electrical like that, I would just drop the lighting down, but augment it to keep it a more uniform light level, a maximum of ten. And if, if that was the case, in other words, if you vote tonight to approve it as submitted and then make the, the exception that I'm to apply the, or, or conform to the code, then I would go back and work it out to conform to the code. Does that make sense?
Mr. Shipp?
Are you aware of if their bank at other locations having lights that were similarly, you see here, with twenty-foot candles after eleven o'clock at night, but it was at ten-foot candles until a car approached, triggering a, a, a brighter lights?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of one specifically. I'm, you know, my mind's going a million miles an hour right now trying to figure out how that would happen. Maybe the, maybe you'd have four light fixtures and two are on motion detectors.
Right.
So that when a car pulls up, they come on. When it goes, you know, motion detector on, timer off. You know, maybe it's on for ten minutes so that.
Right.
They can do their.
Well, so it sounds like it would, it would accomplish a couple of things. First of all, it would save you money.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be as bright. And second of all, it's not gonna lighten up, light up the skies as much as it's on. I mean, I can, I can, this is between the hours of eleven, eleven AM and dusk, so I mean, how many, how many people are gonna use this ATM realistically? Let's say five. I'm just, whatever, whatever the number is. So we don't have to have it on all night. It comes on for five minutes or ten minutes and it dims again. It's not going off, it's just dimming down to ten-foot candles.
Would that satisfy the ordinance or would we have to give an exception to the?
You'd have to give an, you'd have to give an exception for that, but that's in the purview of the planning commission's authority to do so. If the applicant's willing to, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I can speak, I think that's a good solution if it works. But I'm not electrical lighting engineer, so I'd have to work that out with my guys.
Did I understand you to say that the bank's guidelines are two-foot candles at fifty feet?
Yes.
Well, if you do that, you're gonna be in violation of another ordinance, cause we have a light spill ordinance and you're not fifty feet from the property line on the south side.
Yeah, but we will put house shields on the back so you wouldn't get any spill. The, the light fixtures we use on the days, you might get one foot candle five feet behind the light fixtures. They cut off pretty quickly now, the way the, the light, the lenses and the reflectors, it's like headlights. You know, when you drive along, you can see that, the light line of the headlight against the wall. The new light, the, the light fixtures we use, use now are, are pretty good at cutoff.
Mr. Krent, did you have a?
Yeah, a couple, couple quick thoughts. So you, okay, is it, are you gonna provide that two-foot candles over that fifty-foot radius?
Not, not necessarily.
Okay, so that's not an issue at this point?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to get the two-foot candles. I'm just trying to keep the.
Okay.
Canopy the way we've submitted it, that's all.
Then my second question is, we've got a twenty-foot candle hotspot.
Right.
The diameter of that is how large?
I, I, I haven't measured it. I'm gonna, just because the, the pad where the ATM is, is twelve feet long.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna say it's twenty-two feet in diameter.
So it, and it turns the ten-foot candles out about?
No, it's, it's ten-foot candles at twenty-foot diameter.
It's. If you don't.
Yeah.
I just have, but in that, in that tiny circle, it's twenty. That's what I'm saying.
Twenty is here. That's about, that's about five feet out from the center line.
Okay.
Right here. And then this is about maybe a, a radius of twelve, fourteen feet. That's my ten-foot candle line. So everything within this circle is violation of the code. It's over.
Over.
Ten-foot.
Well, my comment would be that's really centered over the activity area. It really doesn't affect traffic coming by. Wouldn't affect anybody in the parking lot, certainly not anybody at the restaurant. I don't know, you know, I realize we've got this code with all these numbers in it, but to me, it's just it's such a small circle. It just focus on that. You just, if it was twenty-foot, you know, if it's twenty-foot in that little circle, then it spills someplace between twenty and ten to that outer circle. I don't think you're, you're talking about anything that's gonna get people all riled up about light spill, especially in this area where it's a, it's basically a parking lot.
Yeah, big parking lot.
I don't, you know, I don't see a problem with it as is, even leaving twenty-foot candles on all night.
Yes, Mr. Shipp.
Well, I think, to me, the ground up lighting wouldn't be that effective because especially with snow and everything in the winter and sloppy and around, that could be the, that could be cut down quite a bit. I like the idea of the timers, but I agree with Mr. Krent, the, for, for public safety and that, and that area that's lit up there is like in a no man's land. It's really not gonna affect residents or, or any traffic at all. I, I really can't see a problem with having the brighter lights.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I was just looking at your cut, the manufacturer's cut. Actually, it is not in a circular pattern. Now, that, what you're showing us, did the manufacturer actually prepare that?
That's correct.
So you are in a circular pattern. I, I noticed how it is oblong at the beginning. There's, there are four fixtures, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so normally they throw out more than they do on the backside, so it's kind of an oval, which is what you've got shown there. Okay, good. But I, I kinda agree. I have no problem with it. If you can use a timer, that'd be great. Not a timer, but a, a photocell where you can actually see it. That, that would be, I think I would agree with something like that. That would be a good compromise, in my opinion.
I think my bank actually uses it, puts the sensors right in the pavement.
Yeah.
Like, just like a.
Like a stoplight or something like that.
Mr. Schultz?
My only concern is we have an ordinance that we developed with this requirement to reduce hotspots and so that people are not annoyed or offended or imposed upon by excessive light in late evening and early morning hours. And if we grant this, everybody that puts a light in in this city is gonna come in and say, well, I want, I, I don't wanna have to dim my lights at night. You've already told one person they don't have to, so you, I don't have to either.
All right. Any other comments you have for the, for the commission?
No, just to reiterate that, you know, if you look at a parking lot, a large parking lot, I can understand the code. You wanna dim the lights, but it's not being used when the stores are closed. And we have a condition here where the ATM is used twenty-four hours of the day. So that's the exception that you could grant the exception for, I guess, is that, you know, every, if somebody else with an ATM came in and asked for it, then it should be granted, but if somebody came in for their store that they close at ten o'clock, but they want the light on, you know, I think that's what the code is, is stressing, is all your parking lot areas in town. That as you drive by it after eleven o'clock and the stores are closed, why should the lights be on?
Mr. Shipp?
I don't know which direction the planning commission is gonna vote, but I will just suggest, I agree with Mr. Schultz that regarding precedent, I think, I don't, my personal opinion is I think they should meet it, but Mr. Weber raises some compelling arguments, so if, if the planning commission does go in the direction of allowing the, the variance, basically, then it should be clear in the, in the, in the, in the, in the resolution that it's because of the twenty-four-hour nature of the, of the ATM and the small area of a, of a hotspot.
Let's bring this back to the commission. We'll wrap it up.
I'm just gonna do a motion, but I can.
Oh, well, let's see if there's any discussion, any more discussion before. If you have a seat, then.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Schultz?
We have a retail establishment that's under construction right now at Waddles and Crooks that is going to have to meet this same requirement in its twenty-four-hour operation. So I'm just gonna reiterate, if, if they have to dim their lights at night and it's a twenty-four hour, hour operation, they're gonna come back and say, this ATM doesn't have to dim their lights. I don't have to dim mine either. If, if we're gonna grant this carte blanche, then we might as well just start revising the, the ordinance right now.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, Brent's comment, when he first started out, he said, well, we have our problem sites. Majority of the problem sites we're gonna be confronted with. In my opinion, we have to find out what the intent was and we have to be flexible. They're gonna be moving further north, leaving, if we start taking a hard, fast, this is what it has to be, they're gonna move on. I, I'm, I'm all for flexibility. I understand that, you know, we have to protect what's there right now or what the future is, but at the same time, I think we have to be more flexible. That's what I tried to stress when I was on the ZBA and I'll stress it again. Right now, we can't have hard and fast rules that we have to abide by. I, I, I'm, I'm opposed to that. As far as I'm concerned, I, I'd be willing to compromise on this and go with the compromise as indicated, but I'm not interested in a hard and fast.
Mr. Edmonds, you had a?
Yes. I, I, I think if, you know, just less than six months ago, another bank did the same thing and they hadn't, didn't raise any issues with that, but photometric thinks it's part of the, part of the code. I, I, I would be opposed to, to granting an exception.
Well, I think we've discussed a couple of alternatives, but one I think is a very cost-effective alternative and can accomplish ninety-five percent of what we're intending to do with the code, meaning have it controlled by a photocell or motion detector and is turned off by a, a timer. But any more discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Chairman, I like the resolve that the special use approval preliminary, site plan approval for the proposed fifth-third bank ATM, northeast corner of John R. and fourteen mile road, Oakland Plaza, section thirty-six, currently zone CB, community business district be granted, subject to the following condition. Reduce the lighting levels to no more than ten foot candles under the canopy between eleven PM and sunrise and that the subject shall be controlled by a photocell and a timer as a result of the conditions of, and I believe it was, was safety, was it, Brent? Or the two?
Safety in smaller area.
Safety, given the, the nature, the twenty-four-hour nature of the, of the proposed use.
Hey, so, so.
I'll second. Any more discussion?
Can we add one more condition to that and say the fact that we don't have any people on premises? Because I think that's key and that would, that's really a differentiator, you know, you've got people to run to.
I don't have any problem.
We've got nobody to run to here if we're in trouble.
All other banks are like that.
I don't have a problem. I'll, I'll add that to them.
I'll agree with, I'll second. I all agree to adding that.
Ready for roll call, Chris?
Are we voting on the amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Can we read, can we have, can we read the motion, just so we all?
Read says the proposed resolution, that special use approval for the preliminary site plan approval for the proposed fifth-third bank ATM, northeast corner of John R. and fourteen mile road, Oakland Plaza, section thirty-six, currently zone CB, community business district, be granted, subject to the following condition. Reduce lighting levels to no more than ten-foot candles under, under the canopy between eleven PM and sunrise. Subject shall be controlled by the photocell and timer as a result of the conditions of the safety and the twenty-four hour. You.
Atr.
At the twenty-four hour proposed nature, use. And. We should have people on premises.
No, due to the condition, as he pointed out. No, due to the condition and the nature of the site.
All right, hang on, hang on.
That's what he said. That's what I seconded to.
Mr. Stratt?
We're trying to wordsmith this a little bit and I, recognizing that whoever, whoever, whatever volunteers to, to, uh, come up with a, with wording at the table is very difficult, so this is no slam, Mr. Senzick. I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate throwing the language out there. So basically, they are to reduce the lighting levels to more than, no more than ten-foot candles under the canopy between eleven PM and, and sunrise, except.
That's.
Except.
By a photocell.
With photocell.
And a timer.
And a timer.
Right.
They can exceed, you know, they can exceed to.
Up to twenty.
Up to twenty.
Yeah, we didn't.
How long's the timer gonna be?
When a car comes by and the lights come on for.
How long's the timer gonna be? Till seven AM?
Ten minutes. Ten minutes.
That should be in the resolution.
Yeah.
That should be in the, definitely in the resolution.
That's, I mean.
That's, I mean, that's what I, that's what Mr. Sanzika says. He's the one who made the-
I agree.
Except with photocell and timer, they can exceed up to 20.
Up to 10 minutes.
20-foot candles up to-
Well, up to 20-foot candles, yes. For up to 10 minutes.
Up to 10 minutes.
Per, per visit, something like that.
And Brent, I want you to check that.
I'm going to be there three o'clock in the morning on that subway.
Do you want to state the reason why though? Based on the conditions?
Condition of sight. And safety precautions.
Mr. Kappen had his added too regarding the fact that there's no-
And the fact that there's no-
Personnel on the premises.
Personnel to call for assistance.
That's a good qualifier.
I thought the exception that you added was the fact that under this unique condition, because of this unique condition.
It's airtight now.
Okay.
All right.
Sue, you okay with that?
I'm okay with that. Just make sure Stratt, Mr. Stratt is okay with the amendment? Okay. We're set to roll. Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shewky?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Kappen?
Yes.
All right.
Sounds like we have a plan.
You have a plan. Good luck.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
It's a good submittal.
You want to make a recommendation? Next time you come in, you should really have the information that nationally, this is what is accepted as a national recognized light level that you just mentioned.
Yeah, it's, it's in the package there.
It was in, it was in the report.
Was it in the report?
I missed it. It was included in the packet.
All right, moving on. Other business. Any public comment for items that are on the current agenda?
Did you see?
Seeing no one. We're drawing near planning commission comments. Mr. Sanzika, let's start with you this evening.
Thank you. Well, I was, I, I did send Brent some pictures of the, there are some parking lot signings at the front of the Ruth Chris, by the Granite City, where it had no parking for restaurant parking between the Ruth Chris area and the Granite City. And I, and my comment was, you know, and there's only valet parking around Granite City. So the only parking that's available, if you don't want to use valet parking, is way off to the back of the parking lot, which is several hundred feet away. And I, Mr. Savin was kind of to respond that that was on the plan that way, that that wasn't a shared parking area.
Yeah, that was, the, the, I went to the site to, to investigate it and that wasn't the area that was designated as shared parking. It was, so I'm guessing, I don't know, but I'm guessing that maybe that was parking that was allocated to certain offices in the building and they didn't want people visiting the restaurants parking there, they wanted to park on the other, other sites that didn't have that same signage.
Well, I guess my only point is that next time we do get a, a plan like that, I, I'd like to review where the shared parking is.
Well, I think, I think you raise a good point because the person who's not on the planning commission and just wants to go to the restaurant, they're not aware of the, they're going to park where, at the easiest, you know, the closest parking spaces. They're, they're not, they're not really privy to what's shared and what's not shared. They just care, they just want to park the car and go eat. So, it was an interesting observation that you, that you made there on the signage.
Most of the valet parking is free if you want to be a Scrooge, but-
I'm sorry, Mr. Shewky, any comments?
No, no.
Mr. Schultz?
That brings up one. There is a pretty substantial non-valet parking lot on the east side between the building and I-75 entrance ramp at Granite City. You can just walk around to the front door.
You know, you know you have to walk around the front door. You can get in that east side door.
And another thing that I think we should think about as we get more buildings coming in, we look at, for instance, the 7-Eleven that's going in at Crooks and Waddles. And the site plan never shows the propane tank cages that go in the sidewalk, the ice machines that go in the sidewalk. And it becomes a real problem when somebody puts the 40-inch deep propane tanks on a five-foot sidewalk and you can't get between the cage and the car. So, I think from now on, when we see things coming in like that, we need to take that into account or stipulate that there shall be no outside storage on the public access sidewalks because it makes it very difficult to get into the building.
Is there any ordinance requirements about a minimum sidewalk width?
Yeah, there's-
On-site, not public?
There are, there are. Five-foot, five-foot, and there's building code requirements. But I, I think the point that, that Mr. Schultz is raising, and it's a good one, is if these things aren't thought of, then it becomes a, then it becomes a fight. You know, the, the owner wants to have, you know, wants to display whatever and, and then, then we're the bad guys because we're, we're enforcing the site plan that they submitted and we're enforcing the building code and that, that takes precedent and safety and convenience is the most important thing. And I think Mr. Schultz's point is well-taken. If you talk about these things upfront-
Absolutely.
Then it's, then it's incorporated into the design.
I, I agree, but in this particular instance, that's shit for sale.
That's shit for sale.
But if there are ordinance and or code requirements, this building, I don't care how upset he's going to be, he needs to buy by this.
Correct.
Mr. Kappen?
Just a quick thought. Are we going to, are we going to go back and redo the signed ordinance at some point? We kind of poked at it a bit, but we didn't do much.
We, we poked at it, it's kind of on the, which I don't know which burner it is, back burner, the wayback burner. It's, we're, what we're going to, what's, what's going to happen is the city's going to revise. There's a number of codes that are dated or outdated or just in need of update. And we've restructured and some, some of the codes refer to positions that no longer exist or they refer to processes that no longer exist or, or they refer to a code that, that is outdated. You know, it's just, there's all kinds. So what we're going to be doing is, is updating a number of codes and that's one of them that needs to be updated. The, the planning commission has, kind of made some recommendations that brought up the, the sign ordinance to make it consistent with the zoning ordinance and that was not a priority for city management at the time that it was moved forward. And now with the change in leadership here at the city, it's probably time to see if it's a priority again.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I'd like to piggy on that because we've been, you know, there's been that one building that's on Big Beaver that they put the graphics on the window. Remember, that was brought up when they started doing it. And I noticed there's a couple of others that now are doing that. So I do think if we can, bring it up as quickly as possible. The second item I was going to bring up as it relates to the parking, actually, that's landlord's jurisdiction. He can, he or she can actually determine where the parking is going to be based on the lease agreements that they, they provide. So if there is an existing area that the parking is for Ruth, that's it. It's in the lease agreement, so.
I guess my only questions, didn't they submit a, a plan for a variance for the parking? That's what I, that's what I was concerned about. Because I, as I recall, the plan was for sheer, revise the, limit the parking because of the shared parking. And here, the shared parking is, you know, 300 feet away and I just-
If I recall when I came, we, we were talking about more than enough parking in that whole area right now. That, the parking, that's why it was allowed, that restaurant was allowed in that area.
What I could do, Mr. Sanzika, is I could send everyone the site plan and, and you could look at the, the areas that you're talking about. We're not the areas that were, that were shown on the site plan as being either on Granite City property or the shared parking area. I could, I could send that to clarify. But I, I think, I think that's, based on my, my investigation, it was consistent. The parking that was not signed was consistent with what was approved for Granite City. The signage that you referred to were on parking spaces that were not part of the Granite City application.
But weren't really part of the study? That was done by PEA or Navity or whoever. That's, I, that's, I guess my, that's my only point.
Yeah, I-
You believe so?
No, I, my, I, my, my head is that I understand your point. Let me, let me, let me send the plans to everybody.
Maybe you could just do a little summary.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Edmonds?
Just a couple things. The item that Tom Krent brought about the ZBA meeting, I think we're probably, when we think about redoing the master plan, I think we need to focus on issues such as that, you know, to, if, if that's our, going to be our, saying that that's okay to do that, to not have a building or not have a port of eye or anything like that in a, where you're going to have that, you know, people coming in and out. I'm not so sure I would go along with that. I, I agree. By the way, the, the vote was split. It was a 4 to 2 vote, so it was, the two senior members voted no because I think they understand, you know, the implications of doing something like that. So I think that's, those are the kind of issues that I think we ought to, as a planning commission, take up when we revisit the master plan. And there's been several other issues similar to that. And finally, a second, last item, I'd absolutely like to thank Brent Savin gave a really good presentation on the planning commission budget last night at the council meeting. And he did respond to many of our concerns about not having enough training budgets. So it went from 2,500 to 6,000, I believe.
6,000. Well, it's not approved yet, but-
No, but it was a nice increase. Nobody raised any concerns about it.
That was the first step in amending it.
Thank you very much.
I wonder, could we get a quick update on the transit center? How you doing? I haven't been back there lately and I'm just curious if they've, if they've got the rest of the structure up over there, real?
Um, I wish I'd known you were going to ask this. I could have come more prepared. I, I was last at the site a couple of weeks ago. Have you been out to the site recently?
Not recently. I know they have the one on the east side.
It's coming along, the, they haven't put the, the bridge across yet, but the structure is-
The bridge is there.
Yeah, but it's not-
It's on the ground, but it's not-
It hasn't been, it hasn't been linked yet. That's coming really soon, which it's going to be kind of tricky. They've got to get a crane, they've got to go under the high tension power lines and they've got to, I'd like to actually go watch that. That'd be kind of cool.
Nice to have some pictures.
I think it's coming along, they, um-
You got a picture?
I have two, Brent. They're actually pouring the concrete too in the, in the wall. They're pumping it up to, to the crash wall.
What I could do is I could send a link to the, we, we, Steve Vendett gives regular updates to the city council.
Oh, that'd be great.
And I could give you a link to the video and you could listen to Steve's own words. Or I could see what he's got in writing and I could, I could email it to everybody tomorrow. Either, I'll, I'll do both. Okay, the most recent, the most recent presentation and the most recent written update, I'll send everybody.
Thank you.
Okay?
Can I ask a question? That's beyond the one I just asked. Could you possibly find out when they might be going to hoist that bridge into place and give us a, an email on that too? So if some of us would like to watch, it would be-
The mayor asked him that too.
My, my understanding is, my understanding is a lot of people have the same interest and they're concerned that there's going to be, you know, people milling all over the place. It still is fairly busy street and whatnot. So my understanding is they're going to kind of cordon off an area where people can go and stand safely and, and get a good view and watch.
There are a lot of near accidents. I was out there about 10 minutes today and people coming down Doyle Drive. They're really blocking and they stop and they don't even see somebody behind them. People wearing their horns. If you're going to do that, you ought to pull in the parking lot.
Yeah. It's really exciting.
Just a frivolous comment. I love that when you talk about candle power because I always have these visions of tiki candles. So it kind of gives a, a planning a kind of a romantic essence.
That's a scary thought.
Right, I guess, since I've watched too much Survivors.
Are romantic.
That's right, planners are romantic.
Mr. Chairman, that was a good point. You, they didn't even account for the trees everywhere. And I don't know, I'm sure the photometrics they're given by manufacturers don't provide it. So, there really wasn't a true picture of what the photometrics were.
You're right.
And I would almost bet you got more than 20-foot candles under four lights, you know? I, I mean, that, what is that, maybe up 12 foot and it's up, so nine foot from a light fix, four light fixtures, you're only getting 20-foot candles? I, very, very doubtful. Very doubtful.
Let's put 20-foot, 20 candles in the center. Turn off the lights, see how much light there is. It really isn't that great. You're absolutely right. That is not that great.
Kathy, do you have any comments? Try to wrap this thing up. Mr. Savin?
A good compromise in the lane. That was good.
Thank you all, see you in a couple of weeks.